Welcome back, colleagues. Eminente Inte Seisna, here's the turn. Bohan is back in session. We are now on the item of our agenda, the consideration of the daily file. We will begin with the third reading file. We will begin with Bill Number 46-36COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 46-36COR as substituted and amended on the floor. Introduced by Therese M. Terlahi, Jose Pito Terlahi, Talina Cruz Nelson, Christopher M. Duñez, Joe S. Sinagastin. An act to amend subsection C and to add a new subsection D to section 66212 of Article II, both of chapter 66, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to encouraging the construction of homes by extending the validity of a building permit for a period of 12 months and granting extensions of such period for cause.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rigel. Senator Rigel, aye. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Sinagastin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi.
I'm going.
Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill Number 46-36COR received 15 ayes, 0 nays. Bill Number 46-36COR is duly passed. Bill Number 47-36COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 47-36COR as amended by the Committee on Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education, and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by V. Anthony Ada, Amanda L. Shelton, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, James C. Moylan, Tallo T. Taidegui, Joanne Brown, Talina Cruz Nelson, Sabina Flores Perez, Joe S. Sinagastin, Clinton E. Rigel, Jose Pito Terlahi, Frank Blas Jr., Christopher M. Duñez. An act to add a new section 9117 to Article I of Chapter 9, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to transferring control of the Tourist Detraction Fund Grant Program to the Guam Visitors Bureau.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rigel. Senator Rigel, aye. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Sinagastin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, nay.
Bill Number 47-36COR received 13 ayes, 2 nays, 0 excused. Bill Number 47-36COR is duly passed. Bill Number 65-36COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 65-36COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by Amanda L. Shelton, Mary Camacho Torres, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Jose Pito Terlahi, Sabina Flores Perez, Tallo T. Taidegui, Joe S. Sinagastin. An act to amend subsections A4, C1, D2, and D4, all of section 7120.1, Chapter 7, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, relative to removing the expiration date on permanent removable windshield placards and extending the period of time for physician certification of temporary removable windshield placards.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rigel. Senator Rigel, aye. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Sinagastin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill Number 65-36COR received 15 ayes, 0 nays. Bill Number 65-36COR is duly passed. Bill Number 71-36COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 71-36COR as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor, Procurement, and Statistics, Research and Planning, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Amanda L. Shelton, Talina Cruz Nelson, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Mary Camacho Torres, Joanne Brown, Tallo T. Taidegui. An act to add a new section 5013 to subarticle A of Article I, Chapter 5, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to adopting a procurement policy in favor of women-owned businesses and to cite this act as the Support for Women-Owned Businesses Act.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rigel. Senator Rigel, aye. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Sinagastin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi.
I'm going.
Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill Number 71-36COR received 15 ayes, 0 nays. Bill Number 71-36COR is duly passed. Bill Number 74-36LS. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 74-36COR as substituted and amended on the floor. Introduced by Joe S. Sinagastin, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Jose Pito Terlahi, Clinton E. Rigel, Mary Camacho Torres, Tallo T. Taidegui, Amanda L. Shelton, James C. Moylan, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Talina Cruz Nelson, Therese M. Terlahi. An act to amend section 26203.2 and repeal section 26203.3, both of Article II, Chapter 26, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to permanently increasing the gross threshold for limited exemptions on the business-privileged taxes for certain small businesses.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rigel. Senator Rigel, aye. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Sinagastin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill Number 74-36COR received 15 ayes, 0 nays. Bill Number 74-36COR is duly passed. Bill Number 85-36COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 85-36COR as substituted and amended on the floor. Introduced by Joe S. Sinagastin, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Clinton E. Rigel, Amanda L. Shelton, V. Anthony Ada, Tallo T. Taidegui, Frank Blas Jr., Jose Pito Terlahi, James C. Moylan, Talina Cruz Nelson. An act to amend section 15301 of Article III and section 15407 of Article IV, Chapter 15, Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, relative to reaffirming the independence of the Guam Ethics Commission.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rigel. Senator Rigel, aye. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Sinagastin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill Number 85-36COR received 15 ayes and 0 nays. Bill Number 85-36COR is duly passed. Bill Number 90-36COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 90-36COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by James C. Moylan, Sabina Flores Perez, Therese M. Terlahi, Joanne Brown, V. Anthony Ada, Christopher M. Duñez, Frank Blas Jr., Joe S. Sinagastin, Tallo T. Taidegui. An act to amend section 5248 of subarticle G, Article III, Chapter 5, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring monthly records and justification reports when purchases are made through a sole source or emergency procurement process.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rigel. Senator Rigel, aye. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Sinagastin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres, nay.
Bill Number 90-36COR received 14 ayes, 1 nay. Bill Number 90-36COR is duly passed. Bill Number 89-36COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 89-36COR as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, and substituted and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Joe S. Sinagastin, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Talina Cruz Nelson, Clinton E. Rigel, Amanda L. Shelton, Sabina Flores Perez, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Joanne Brown, Christopher M. Duñez, James C. Moylan, Jose Pito Terlahi, Mary Camacho Torres. An act to amend section 4703D1 and 2 and section 4703G of Article VII, Chapter 4, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to increasing the threshold of the purchase of a home from $300,000 to $375,000, excluding other costs imposed on the purchase of a home and removing the five-year limitation on adjusting the eligible transaction amount.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rigel. Senator Rigel, aye. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Sinagastin, aye.
Senator Shelton, aye. Colleagues, it has been brought to my attention that there is an issue with the engrossment in that the sponsors are not all listed on Bill Number 89-36COR. But I believe this is a technical amendment that can be made unless there is a motion otherwise. Sure.
Madam Speaker, if you want, I can make the motion that we add the remaining because if I'm correct, I think everyone was both included, especially Senator Tallo was. I asked that earlier in the beginning when we were first discussing the bill.
Yes. All right. So notwithstanding the rules, there's a motion to correct the sponsors on this bill, and the clerk will read the sponsors now and the name that they're supposed to appear.
Introduced by Joe S. Sinagastin, Tallo T. Taidegui, Therese M. Terlahi, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Talina Cruz Nelson, Clinton E. Rigel, Amanda L. Shelton, Sabina Flores Perez, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Joanne Brown, Christopher M. Duñez, James C. Moylan, Jose Pito Terlahi, Mary Camacho Torres.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing the objection that motion carries, notwithstanding the rules, we will resume voting or we will... I'm going to ask the clerks to revote, please, on Bill Number 89-36COR. We vote on Bill Number 89-36COR. Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rigel. Senator Rigel, aye. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Sinagastin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill Number 89-36COR received 15 ayes, 0 nays. Bill Number 89-36COR is duly passed. Bill Number 102-36COR. Please read the title.
Bill Number 102-36COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by Joanne Brown, Therese M. Terlahi, Tallo T. Taidegui, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Christopher M. Duñez, James C. Moylan, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Talina Cruz Nelson, Sabina Flores Perez, Clinton E. Rigel, Joe S. Sinagastin, Amanda L. Shelton, Jose Pito Terlahi, Mary Camacho Torres. An act to add new sections 8103D, 8103.1, and 8107D of Chapter 8 and amend section 43122A of Article I, Chapter 43, all of Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to increasing public access to information on government meetings, deliberations, and decision-making by requiring broadcasting of public meetings and notice of agenda items.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rigel. Senator Rigel, aye. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Sinagastin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill Number 102-36COR received 15 ayes, 0 nays. Bill Number 102-36COR is duly passed. Resolution Number 56-36COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Resolution Number 56-36COR as amended by the author and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Clinton E. Rigel, Jose Pito Terlahi, Joe S. Sinagastin, Frank F. Blas Jr., Amanda L. Shelton, Mary Camacho Torres. Relative to expressing the utmost support of the people of Guam for House Resolution 279, acknowledging that the United States Supreme Court's decisions in the insular cases and the territorial incorporation doctrine are contrary to the text and history of the United States Constitution and rest on racial views and stereotypes from the era of Plessy v. Ferguson that have long been rejected and are contrary to our nation's most basic constitutional and democratic principles and should also be rejected as having no place in United States constitutional law.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, nay. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, nay. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, nay. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, nay. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, pass. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, pass. Senator Rigel. Senator Rigel, aye. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Sinagastin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, nay. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Resolution number 56-36COR received 8 ayes, 7 nays. Resolution number 56-36COR is duly passed. Bill number 110-36COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 110-36COR, as substituted and amended on the floor, introduced by Therese M. Terlahi, Talina Cruz Nelson, Frank Blas Jr., Joanne Brown, V. Anthony Ada, Telo T. Taidegui, Clinton E. Rogel, Tina Rose Munya Barnes. An act to amend section 41649 and add a new section 41649.1 to Article 16, Chapter 4, Division 1, Title 26, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, to amend section 67.308.1 of Article 3, Chapter 67, Title 9, Guam Code annotated, and to amend section 126050 of Article 6, Chapter 12, Title 10, Guam Code annotated, relative to allowing electronic transmission of prescriptions for Schedule 2, 3, 4, and 5 controlled substances.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Sinagastin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill number 110-36COR received 15 ayes and 0 nays. Bill number 110-36COR is duly passed. Bill number 104-36COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 104-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor, Procurement, and Statistics Research and Planning, introduced by Sabina Flores Perez, Therese M. Terlahi, V. Anthony Ada, Joanne M. Brown, Christopher M. Duñez, Talina Cruz Nelson, Telo T. Taidegui. An act to amend sections 6703, 6802, and 6805, and add a new section 6817, all of Chapter 6, Title 11, Guam Code annotated, relative to payment requirements for cigarette tax stamps.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, nay. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, pass. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, pass. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, nay. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Sinagastin, nay. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, nay. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, nay. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, pass. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, pass, nay.
Bill number 104-36COR received 7 ayes, 8 nays. Bill number 87-36COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 87-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Education, Self-Determination, and Historic Preservation, Infrastructure, Border Safety, Federal and Foreign Affairs, and Maritime Transportation, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Mary Camacho Torres, Talina Cruz Nelson, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Joe S. Sinagastin, Jose Pito Terlahi. An act to add a new Article 4 to Chapter 73 of Division 7, Title V, Guam Code annotated, and to amend section 6603(c) and repeal section 6604 of Article 6, Chapter 6, Title 11, Guam Code annotated, relative to authorizing asset forfeiture for the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency and establishing a customs forfeiture fund.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Sinagastin, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill number 87-36COR received 15 ayes and 0 nays. Bill number 87-36COR duly passes. We will now consider the voting file. On the nomination of Dr. Lisa A. Bazac Cruz to serve as a member, Ed. D., representative of the Guam Commission for Education, Guam Commission for Educator Certification, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Dr. Lisa A. Bazac Cruz receives unanimous consent of the legislature. On the nomination of Leanna Lynn Elborja to serve as a member, guidance counselor, representative of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Leanna Lynn Elborja is a member of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification, receives the consent of the legislature. On the nomination of Lawrence J. M. Alcarrow to serve as a member, general public representative of the Guam Academy Charter School Council, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Do you please raise your hand? The nomination of Lawrence J. M. Alcarrow receives unanimous consent. On the nomination of Roberta M. Abide to serve as a member, community at large representative of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification, all those in favor, please raise your hand. The nomination of Roberta M. Abide receives unanimous consent by the Guam Legislature. On the nomination of Angelina Marie C. Lape to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Social Work, all those in favor, please raise your hand. The nomination of Angelina Marie C. Lape receives unanimous consent by the Guam Legislature. On the nomination of Corazon R. Montellano to serve as a member of the Guam Solid Waste Authority Board of Directors, all those in favor, please raise your hand. The nomination of Corazon R. Montellano receives unanimous consent by the legislature. On the nomination of Maureen A. San Nicolás to serve as a member, NASW Guam Chapter Representative of the Guam Board of Social Work, all those in favor, please raise your hand. The nomination of Maureen A. San Nicolás receives unanimous consent by the Guam Legislature. On vetoed Bill number 11-36COR, an act to amend section 19405bnc of Article 4, Chapter 19, Title 10, Guam Code annotated, relative to requiring legislative authorization to extend a declaration of a state of public health emergency. Sorry. Let me restart that. My apologies. We are now on Bill number 11-36COR. Notwithstanding the objections of Imago Hagen Guahan, shall vetoed Bill number 11-36COR be overridden? Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 11-36COR, an act to amend section 19405bnc of Article 4, Chapter 19, Title 10, Guam Code annotated, relative to requiring legislative authorization to extend a declaration of a state of public health emergency and to be known as the Restoration of Separation of Powers Act.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, nay. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, nay. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, pass. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, nay. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Sinagastin, nay. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, nay. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, nay. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Perez. Senator Perez.
We are now on brief extension of remarks. The floor is open to brief extension of remarks. Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, you are recognized.
Sisus Masia, Madam Speaker, for giving me an opportunity to speak on extension of remarks. In order to form a more perfect union, we as a nation have had to acknowledge and rectify the injustices of the past. But we know too well that change does not happen on its own, Madam Speaker. It was because of the work and advocacy of the community that the racist motivation behind Plessy versus Ferguson and Red Scott versus V. Sanford were overturned by the Supreme Court in Brown v. the Board of Education. And the same must be done to truly move beyond the racist doctrine that is the foundation of the Insular Cases. Madam Speaker, Resolution 56-36 expresses support for the House Resolution 279, which recognizes and acknowledges that Americans' constitutional and democratic principles apply throughout the United States in both state and territories, that the Insular Cases are relics of the racial views of an earlier era that have no place in our nation today, and rejects the Insular Cases and their application to all present and future cases and controversies involving the application of the Constitution of the United States Territories. As I have said repeatedly, Madam Speaker, this is just the first step. Many of my colleagues have asked, what's next? What's next is we call on Congress to further exercise their plenary power to preserve the CLTC, Section 30, and other programs we enjoy today while ensuring territorial parity by extending full access to SSI and Medicaid and SNAP. As long as the Insular Cases endure, Madam Speaker, the territories remain in a political limbo. We know all too well that justice will not be handed to us. We must demand it. This coming Monday, Madam Speaker, we will celebrate Memorial Day and honor the thousands of Americans who died fighting to liberate our island. They did so with courage and valor, rooted in their belief in freedoms and democracy. And we honor the countless sons and daughters of Guam, the Marianas, Micronesia, and our entire blue continent who fought proudly to defend the fundamental belief that freedom and liberty are inherent human rights. We must remember their sacrifices and ensure that the ultimate price they paid does not go in vain. As policymakers, I urge all of you, my colleagues, to reflect on that. It is because of them that we have the privilege of standing on this floor today to the people of Guam. I do want to take the time to thank my colleagues for standing with me, and we will continue to fight to ensure that the people of Guam are no longer left behind. When Doncoluna Sisus Masia Sisus Unbinidis Buongiorno, Sis, Madam Speaker. To all, and a blessed Memorial Day celebration on Monday. Sena, Madam Speaker.
Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to thank my colleagues for their consideration of Bill 104-36, which aim to refine the past cigarette-stamp tax legislation with input from our community, government agencies, wholesalers, and other stakeholders. Each of us was selected to this body to work on behalf of our island community. We must not be bullied into protecting special interests at the expense of our people. And we must not be pitted against each other on this issue especially. A number of misinformed articles have been circulating on social media today, insinuating this bill intends to directly benefit one enterprising family in our community, and that it increases taxes. This could be further from the truth. And I invite the public to review the committee report, which includes the amended bill and all the testimonies from stakeholders and government officials that helped to inform the change. My goal with Bill 104 has always been to work to strengthen the current cigarette-stamp tax law by providing clarity determining a funding source, empowering Department of Revenue and Taxation to be able to administer the cigarette-stamp tax program and level the playing field for all. We have to ask ourselves, who will profit from the $17 million contract? It most certainly is not the people that we are elected to office to work on behalf of. It is not the most vulnerable in our community. It is not the countless families who have been impacted by tobacco and chronic illnesses and disease. It is not our front lighters, our nurses, whom we relied heavily upon during this pandemic. Privatization will cost our community $17 million, and it is not the most prudent or responsible way to spend the people's money. Yes, we need to fix the system. But fixing the system should not be an opportunity to hand out million-dollar contracts to private companies at the expense of our people. If there's anything we have learned from the pandemic, it's how critical it is that we invest in the health of our people and our health services. Bill 104-36 most notably saves our people $17 million over the life of a contract. $17 million that can go towards education, cancer treatment, prevention, drug-related abuse programs, and even to the maintenance of our public health facilities. Bill 104-36 is a responsible fix to the gaps left by previous legislation. With it, we could foster accountability and transparency in the taxation process and save the people of Guam millions each year. We can fund programs that will mitigate and prevent the harms caused by tobacco, alcohol, and other substances on the people of our community. We are all representatives of the people of Guam, and I respect the people in this hall and the voices that you represent, because we are the voices of our people, our people who are still dealing with the effects of the pandemic on our community and our economy, our people who especially now are in need of a reliable and adequately funded health service and program. Thank you for allowing me this time.
Madam Speaker, Majority Leader Nelson, you are recognized at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on brief extension of remarks. I'd like to explain my opposing Resolution Number 56-36. And the purpose of this, Madam Speaker, is in the resolution, I do stand with acknowledging the discriminatory and racial undertones that provided the foundation of the insular cases. However, Madam Speaker, doing a lot of research and listening to the House Resolution hearing on Resolution 279 several times, the resolution presented to support House Resolution 279 causes an act of caution when we proceed. As stated in one of the testimonies, that the insular cases also provide the basic analytical framework the federal courts in more recent decades have used to protect the indigenous peoples of the territories, in particular their land, culture, and self-governance rights. For instance, in the CNMI, in the case of Wabo versus Villa Cruces, the court invoked the insular cases to uphold an ancestry-based land alienation restriction against an eco-protection challenge. Another example is in American Samoa. In the case of Tu'ua versus United States, the insular cases were once again more a shield protecting against what many in American Samoa, including the territorial government itself, considered to be an imposition of citizenship by judicial fiat. And Madam Speaker, some have said that this resolution that we debated on the day before was just to say that we are opposing the racial and discriminatory language of those of the past. But Madam Speaker, listening to House Resolution 279's hearing and listening to all the scholars, more importantly, also listening to the testimony submitted by the Lieutenant Governor of American Samoa, that this resolution doesn't just do that. It also could have a negative impact towards our other island brothers and sisters, such as American Samoa, and may also impact the CNMI cases when it comes to land rights. And Madam Speaker, the unincorporated territorial status does also provide for Guam an opportunity to negotiate and allow more flexibility than the states have themselves as an unincorporated territory. And so, looking into this, there were several risks. The risk was the first and foremost in the resolution where we state, recognize that America's constitutional and democratic principles apply throughout the U.S., including both states and territories. The risk is impacting American Samoa. And I strongly believe that it is not my position advocating for Guam and also having a negative impact on another island territory. We also had the Congresswoman of American Samoa speak on this issue, that they are utilizing the tools of Congress to advocate for equity within American Samoa. And these are the tools that we need to use, Madam Speaker. I felt that there is a great risk supporting House Resolution 279 as a whole. If the resolution read that we are just we are opposing the language of those that have stated in historical documents the racial undertones of the insular cases, then absolutely I would support that. But the resolution does more than that. It could run a risk of us losing our Section 30 funds. It could run a risk of us not being able to give out qualifying certificates. It could run a risk of impacting negatively American Samoa's advocacy for their own right to self-determination. It can run a risk of us losing authority for our Tramoral Land Trust programs. And so, these are just some of the few risks that I was not willing to take in support of this resolution. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Majority Leader. Anyone else wishing to speak on the extension of remarks? If not, Speaker Terlahi, I will recognize you for the extension of remarks. You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And before I begin, I'd just like to announce that I received an executive order from the governor as we were in session extending the public health emergency until July to expire on July 1, 2021. I want to thank all of my colleagues for the debates and discussions and the collaboration during this month's session. It's through the back-and-forth discussions, amendments, and debate that we make bills stronger and hopefully pass legislation that addresses our island's issues more fully. I think this type of dialogue and collaboration is absolutely the way forward for our island and for the use of $604 million in American Rescue Plan funds as well. We, the legislature as a united body, put together an initial priority listing for the use of the American Rescue Plan funds and submitted this to the governor earlier this month. This list was created and submitted before the U.S. Treasury issued its interim guidance on the use of the funds. However, in the proposed spending plan, we prioritize direct assistance to individuals and families, expansion of healthcare services, infrastructure and technology upgrades, workforce training and diversification and direct student aid, and streamlined and upgraded government services. I know that we've been told, as a legislature countless times, that we have no authority over those recovery funds. And we could just sit around and do nothing and watch as our laws are ignored or new laws are created by executive orders, which ironically is allowed based on a public health emergency law that a previous legislature created. But I believe that we have an opportunity to try to influence how the use of this unprecedented amount of federal funding can truly change the quality of life for all of us on Guam, particularly those vulnerable populations who have been suffering the most during the pandemic and have been left behind. We know based on the report that UOG just released today on the impact on Guam residents and businesses, that those populations most impacted negatively tended to be women, Chamoros, people under the age of 40 with income less than $50,000, and that 75% of those impacted worked in the private sector. The public did not have much say in how the $118 million in CARES funding was spent last year. But it is my hope that we can truly engage and listen to the public for their input on how to use these American Rescue Plan funds. This is why we have introduced Resolution 93-36, incorporating the lists that we unanimously agreed on and soliciting feedback from the community and our government agencies. The first public hearing for that resolution is scheduled for June 4 at 11:00 a.m. And we will accept testimony virtually or through the Zoom platform or live, I mean, in person here at the legislature. The legislature alone will not be successful in helping to steer how this $604 million will be utilized if we can't engage the public. And it is their voices that our leaders should find the most compelling. So I hope to give that opportunity, Madam Speaker. In closing, I too would like to pay tribute to those who died while serving, as we will do on Monday, Memorial Day. We have tried through previous law in the legislature to make a full list of those brothers and sisters from Guam. We've given plaques to their surviving family members, put their names in our hall. We announce their names in our sessions. But no tribute is enough. And with gratitude and respect, we honor and remember you. And we vow to care for those who you have left behind. Sis, Madam Speaker.
Buongiorno, Speaker Terlahi. Are there anyone else wishing to speak on the extension of remarks? If not, Majority Leader?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make the motion that we adjourn session subject to the call of the speaker.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing, none. Motion carries.